Hey there, how are you? You're good, yes, you're good. Hey Darla. How are you, Mr. Hoffman? Hi, good.
I have a call to be made. What's the latest? I'm not going to make school board orders.
Madam Chair, we approve the agenda for 3:25, 2025. Really? Sorry?
There's a motion, second. The agenda is presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved?
Madam Chair, we approve that the school board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of seven personnel matters as permitted under subdivision 8.1 subsection 2.2 dash 3711 of the Code of Virginia consisting of the following: classified appointments, part-time appointments, long-term substitutes, employee separation, classified retirement, extended medical leave, and status change. Also, five student matters permitted under subsection 8.2 subsection 2.2 dash 3711 of the Code of Virginia consisting of the following: two re-admission cases, two long-term suspensions, and one expulsion. Also, one personnel matter is permitted under subdivision 8.1 subsection 2.2 dash 3711 of the Code of Virginia where superintendent interviews.
Second. There's a motion, second. Do you want me to close session? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? School Board will now reconvene at the meeting. Now, certification in closed meeting.
Whereas the Acuimat County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative record vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.1 dash 3711T, the Code of Virginia, requires certification by the school board, a closed meeting was conducted formally with Virginia law. Now therefore being resolved, the Acuimat County School Board hereby certifies that in the best of each member's knowledge, one, on the public business matters lawfully exempted from public meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, on such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
There's a motion, second, certify the closed meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Board, all.
President.
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 Here.
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 He's here.
I'm here.
Can we all say a very short name?
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, approve the minutes from 3:04, 3:12, 3:13, and 3:14.
Madam Chair, approve that we approve the minutes from both 3:04, 2025, 3:12, 2025, 3:13, 2025, and 3:14, 2025.
Second. There's a motion, second, to approve all the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion on the two re-admission cases?
Madam Chair, approve that we approve the re-admission cases, 03, 25, 25, oh 1, and 02.
Second. Thank you, a motion, second, to approve the re-admission cases. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Abstain.
One abstention. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the long-term suspensions?
Madam Chair, approve that we approve the long-term suspensions for case number 03, 25, 25, oh 3, and 05.
Second. Thank you, there is a motion, second, to approve cases number 03 and 05. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion for 04?
Madam Chair, approve that we approve as amended for case 03, 25, 25, oh 4.
Second. Thank you, there is a motion, second, to approve as amended, case number 04. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
May I?
Is there a motion on the expulsion?
Madam Chair, approve that we approve the expulsion as presented, 03, 25, 25, oh 6.
Second. There's a motion, second, to approve the expulsion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. All in favor? Thank you. Is there a motion on the personnel list?
Madam Chair, approve that we approve the personnel list as amended.
Second. Motion, second, on personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, opposed? Motion carries. Just a minute. Would you like to give us? Okay. We'll do the public hearing first.
Madam Chair, rules for a public hearing. One, identify yourself by name and non-alien address. Two, speakers are limited to three minutes. Three, individuals may observe or transfer their time to another speaker. Four, specific personnel matters must not be initiated at a public meeting. Five, speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or use profanity. Six, specify the nature of your remarks. Seven, speakers who have previously spoken on a subject for public comment should not be allowed to readdress the board during the same public comment period. Eight, specific questions should not be resolved prior, excuse me, specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or the appropriate staff member. Nine, anyone who would like to present a PowerPoint presentation for a public hearing has to present presentation, that presentation, twenty-four hours in advance for review by the staff for perjury in this. And ten, all questions shall be directed to the chairperson at her discretion, who will at her discretion solicit the response from the appropriate staff member.
This is basically the same present. Good evening. This is basically the same presentation as we did at the last meeting. We're just reviewing it again, and after receiving public comment and school board member comments will be coming to you at the next meeting with the final proposal, or you can add or discuss things at that point. The first two slides were actually taken from the county. These are the county slides. The top number could change because we still have not received the audit yet. We're hoping to get a draft by Thursday's meeting, but, so that is possible that this number will change. The second slide shows the total. And then the following slide, these are the major building projects that we are planning and are trying to receive information on. I don't think we have final numbers yet for the gyms. We do have the Acuimat Primary School renovation in there. There's a $200,000 construction contingency included in that, in that figure. At some point, you know, we might want to up that figure, but at this point, I think we're comfortable with it at seven and a half million, knowing that the county's matching us to two and a half million for the total project of ten. And the two gym numbers, we've had board members on those committees, those are the latest numbers that we have. If they change, we will bring them back. This is taken directly off of the capital improvement plan that you all have seen for some time now, and the numbers were, and the projects were actually taken off of that. This is a five-year plan that we submit to the county every year when they're doing their capital improvement. However, we fund our own capital improvement, and the way we can fund it is to carry forward funds. These were the items that were taken off of the budget request by the principals and the department heads that could be considered one-time purchases, and we took them off so that they would be considered and funded. We still don't have the price for the concrete border around the track at Arcadia High School, even though Mr. Bennett did take someone to review that last week, but we do not have the price yet. I expect that to be very costly. These are other considerations that we had talked about last year when we gave the retention and sign-on bonus. The retention bonus was $2,000 per employee, and the sign-on bonus was $1,000 per employee. This is put out there, the board can discuss change. There is some news that has come down the pike on a retention bonus that I'll discuss in the budget section, but this is still, once again, these are considerations. The gym, we added a little bit for Shankitake Elementary because of possible site mitigation and site considerations for that. I did want to remind everybody that we had put some money back in the operating budget because we have these positions that we can't fill, and in speaking with Dr. Jeff, we put about $35,000 back into our operating, thirty-five percent, excuse me, back into our operating budget. And I did want to point out that all in Virginia is a three-year grant from the state, that we received all the money upfront. So at the point that FY '24 closed, we still had 2.24 million in that grant, so that is still ear-tagged for that grant and needs to be kept in that grant area. So, that is all I have. There's a public comment here, but I don't know if this is for regular public comment or for the public.
So there are three names on here. We're picking, we're accepting comments. There's a general public comment section later in the evening, but this is a budget hearing, so if you are here and you signed up for the, and you have comments about the budget, Connie Burford, Vanna, and Dr. Fetterman. I apologize, there was only one sheet up there, so I think everyone signed up on one sheet, right? So if your comments are about the budget, please, please go ahead.
No, it's about the budget.
Thank you.
Connie Burford, 812A, D.B. Road, Shankitake, Virginia. I see that the Shankitake Elementary School gym is another consideration. I would like to remind the board of the need for the full-size gym at Shankitake Elementary School. Currently, they are the only elementary school that will not have a full-size gym. They are adjacent to Shankitake Combined School, which houses the Shankitake Middle School students who also do not have a full-size gym. This gym would allow the full-court activities for the elementary school students during the day, as well as middle school practice and competitions for sports during the evenings. I would like to bring that to your attention, just so that you can take that into consideration. Also, I would like to remind the board, or ask the board, if they could please clarify the use of the nurses or nursing help that were added into the budget, because the number of students does not always equate to the number of incidents that the nurses see during the day. Those numbers can be addressed and looked at onto the, it's a document that they save that the nurses and their nursing supervisor can see every day. Shankitake nurses see their fair share and more of incidents during the day, and they do need the extra help, so I would appreciate if you all would take that into consideration as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I signed because I only saw one sheet here. I wanted to speak at the general comment.
Okay, I'll call you later. Thank you for calling. Mr. Fetterman?
Dr. Fetterman.
Later, okay, thank you. Does that conclude our budget hearing? There are no more comments, I'm going to close the budget hearing. Public hearing is now closed. We're going to have the, Mr. Lawrence is going to present the Beta student recognition.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, it's with great honor I'm here tonight on a lot of different reasons, but my favorite reason is to recognize all of these wonderful students who represent the best of who we are and what we are. It's amazing when you look out and see the different kids that are here. I'm not going to introduce them, it's okay. I would like their principal or coach to come up and say a few very brief words and introduce their students. So at this time, I would call Arcadia High School and Mr. O'Shea.
Appreciate that, sir. Thank you very much. Alphabetical order. Good evening, everybody. I have two groups I want to represent. I have my Beta Club, and I have a student athlete who reached a tremendous milestone this year. So first, I'll ask Ms. Baker, one of our sponsors for our Beta Club, to come up and recognize our students for their achievements this year at the State Convention.
All right, good evening. I'm extremely proud of the AHS Beta Club and its members. At the State Conventions, they competed in a variety of academic and non-academic competitions, and in the events that they did not place in, they still received positive feedback and encouragement. Our club includes all grade levels, and our freshman club members are among the winners from the State Beta Convention. So first, I've got Porter Bouyer. So Porter Bouyer won first place in the speech contests, and he got third place in ninth grade social studies. We had an apparel design team composed of Renaja Holden, Jabberville Lescot, Akila Walker, Nikila Walker, and Estefany Ortiz Ortiz. They took second place in accessory design. Our vocal performance was by Jassim Pascian Rodriguez. He received second place. Our book battle team included a freshman, Natalia Cortegine, and sophomore Daniella Maranega Betran, and two juniors, Brisa Mateos Enriquez and Daisy Guian Gonzalez. Renaja Holden. Where's Renaja? Okay, was our 2024, 2025 Leadership Representative for Virginia, and our, for 2025, 2026, we have Jonathan Thibault, who's a junior, and he's going to try to be competing to be a Beta Ambassador at the National Convention. Chriske Ortiz Ortiz placed third in Spanish, and creative writing again, freshman Natalia Cortegine placed third place. And at the Leadership Summit, our school won for the project proposal, which for this year is each one teach one, and some of the principals I've contacted, because I would like for our Beta members to provide one-on-one tutoring, basically, for children who are in elementary and middle school who may need that extra help. So I've contacted the middle schools and the elementary schools, and Brisa and Jabberville are going to be heading that up for me. So at the Leadership Summit, the kids did great in project proposal and also the collaboration connection, so that was Daniella, Ashley Austin, Giovanni, Daisy, Renaja, Jabberville, Yuritza, Shamika, Imaya, Danisha, Jonathan, Jacandi, David, and Brisa. So I am so proud of the kids, and I will say that our club now has seventy-three members. I couldn't be happier. I'm sorry, I forgot to. I couldn't do this without having Ms. Ashante Moore's help, because she has just been, it's just been wonderful, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you all, thank you all very much for coming in, and one very fast with all your accomplishments.
Real quick, Porter Bouyer is going to represent Arcadia High School at the DHSL Speech State Competition this weekend, so he's traveling out to Salem, so wish him some luck, maybe he'll bring home some more hardware. Good luck, sir. Next, I want to invite Jordan Crawford to come up, and my boys' basketball coach, John Harmon. Jordan is a junior at Arcadia High School, he's here with his father. Jordan reached a milestone in this year's basketball season, scoring a thousand points, which is a hard accomplishment. I think in my career at high school, I scored 100 points. Certainly a different type of player than myself, much more athletic, and certainly much more entertaining to watch, but certainly a recognition that needs to be celebrated, so congratulations. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Crawford.
I actually didn't go alphabetically. Mr. O'Shea used to be my assistant principal, so I gave him personnel. But then I looked, and virtually everybody on this list I'm connected to, so it's okay. Next up, we have Shankitake Combined School, Mr. John Kilman.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Again, it's a pleasure to have the amount of kids that we had this year in Beta, especially at our senior Beta Club, which I've been at the school for three years, and I think this is the first year that we've been able to have it. So, first of all, I want to introduce Ms. Jody Gassetos, our junior Beta sponsor. She's done a wonderful job this year, along with Ms. Vazaloo, who helped out a lot.
I helped out, yeah.
You don't want to stand up. Don't be shy. So I'm going to start listing, reading names in three categories for junior Beta, academics, performances, and visual arts. And for those of you that could join us today, this evening, please stand up. Start with academics. Sixth grade computer science principals, Blake Hasty, third place. Seventh grade computer science principals, Cooper Atkins, second place. Seventh grade language arts, Luciana Vazaloo, third place. Seventh grade health PE principals, Jackson Young, third place. Eighth grade language arts, Jenna Daisy, first place. Speech, again, Luciana Vazaloo, first place. Quiz bowl, Jackson Barrett, Benzo Connor, Alyssa Benikoff, and Logan Smidell, first place. I know it's Proud Daddy over there. Next category, performances. Performing arts, small group, first place. Amaya Griffin, Gracie Royale, Luciana Vazaloo, Erylyn Gorsuch, Vera Breland, Alyssa Boardman, Summer Bell, Caleb Rolz, Ava Toth, Cash Littleton, Cooper Atkins. Song fest, entire club, second place. In the last category, visual arts. Apparel design, Amaya Griffin, third place. Accessorized design, Alyssa Benikoff, third place. Fiber arts, Pippa Knard, second place. Recyclable arts, Sawyer Burt, second place. Pottery, Lachlan Giddens, third place. In quilting, Erylyn Gorsuch, second place. Now, senior Beta sponsor, thanks to Jessica Tyler, for starting things back up and putting Shankitake back on the map with the senior Beta. Much appreciated. Second place, we have spelling, Emma Tyler. Second place biomedical, Julia Dustin. First place poetry, Ava Barrett. Second place US history, Corey Salisbury. Second place digital art, Kaylee Tyler. Third place digital art, Ava Barrett. Third place quilting, Brianna Adel. Third place woodworking, Bryce Luck. Third place jewelry, Sophie Littleton. Third place digitally enhanced photography, Julia Dustin. First place on-site painting, Riley Giddens. Premier performers, Nora Outen and Abby Dosh. Cassandra Dosh, Virginia Beta Scholarship winner. Beta, yes. So quite out of breath, it's quite a few names here, but again, we showed up and we did pretty well, so thanks.
Instead of introducing somebody that was assistant principal under me, I'm going to introduce the next person who was my supervisor last year, Mr. Trey Hanks, Arcadia.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Call everything he knows. As Mr. Lawrence says, this is a great chance to recognize all the great students we have here in Acuimat County. I've worked at all the middle schools now, so it's cool to see some of my former students still doing great things, so great job, guys. So I'll start with the school I'm at now, Arcadia Middle School. Ms. Lineiger, our Beta sponsor, so come on up, Ms. Lineiger, and bring the two students, I think, that came with you. So we had six students total place, so I recognize the students that are not here, and then we'll introduce the students that are here. So we had Nova Richardson, third place digital art. Angel Lopez Gonzalez, second place mathematics. Jalen Satchel, third place health and physical education. And Mason Washington, third place spelling. So those students are not here, but they still went out and performed and did a great job. The two that I have with me, first I have Mr. Jefferson Perez Diaz, and he placed first place for Spanish, so good job, Jefferson. And then next, we have Ms. Iris Snead, second place black and white photography. So congratulations, guys. As long as we didn't want to say anything, but she's doing a great job. She's been doing Beta, how long has she been Beta at the middle school now?
About thirteen years.
Yeah, so we love having her, she's very enthusiastic, the kids enjoy it, so good work, thank you.
The next group is near and dear to my heart, because they're an annual middle school where I've been working for the last three years. Mr. Thompson, would you come up and introduce your people and get the show on the road? I've watched these young gentlemen and young ladies for the last three years, they are an impressive group.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Ms. Grimes and Ms. Phillips. They are Beta sponsors. Everything that you see tonight that we're presenting, all of this, they did everything that I probably do. Joy Phillips will introduce out, and we did very well this year.
He did, he is exactly right. This group of students is, they get more and more impressive every year. They were absolutely phenomenal. I'm going to start by reading a list of all of our Beta students that have qualified for the national competition. They all are state-winning. They all are state-winning champions. Sarah Augustine, Navee Bailey, Olanska Baines Jr., Olya Baines, Reed Beck, Emily Blake, Joshua Bundick Jr., Bradley Bundick, Grace Bylick, Anna Cartwright, Emma Deech, Grace Deech, Amio Destin, Sarah Dean, Journey Eater, Evelyn Escalante Perez, Hudson Ford, Finley Giorgilli, Melinda Gordon, Talia Grimes, Hunter Rubes, Tanner Rubes, Ashlyn Johnson, Emmeline Johnson, Brooke Johnson, Dylan Juarez Roberto, Benjamin Colteas, Leela Lusk, Elizabeth Marsh, Liam Mirs, Hayden Morgan, Isabella Pinuco, Sophia Pinuco, Henby Patel, Alyssa Phillips, Isabel Ramirez Velasquez, Sadie Ryder, Jacob Rice, Jackson Rice, Samley, Roblero Perez, Amelia Shotwell, Ariana Samuta, Brooklyn Smith, Peyton Smith, Simeon Spady, Lucas Statchill, Ariana Taylor, Lilian Truckner, Connor Tyler, Kamaj Ulysses, Diori Upsher, Dynasty Valmont, Jaleah Wharton, Leila Wheatley, and Caitlin Zavala. Woo, we need a round of applause, everyone. We started our state run at the Virginia Beta Leadership Summit. We qualified in four categories with twenty-six state champions. We placed in, our Virginia leadership rep was Diori Upsher. We placed in project proposal with our birthdays for Beta project, collaboration connection, and lead outside the box. At the Virginia State Convention, we placed in sixteen categories with sixty-one state champions. We had the gavel banged at the opening session with Talia Grimes as our Virginia junior Beta president. Our solo duo trio with Emmy Johnson, Leela Lusk, and Alyssa Phillips placed second. Lilian Truckner was a third place digitally enhanced photography. Talia Grimes was second place in mixed media. Alyssa Phillips was the first place in quilting. Our engineering team placed second with Hudson Ford, Tanner Rubes, Benjamin Colteas, Henby Patel, and Kamaj Ulysses. Our performing arts group talent placed first. And they were a talented group. They sang, they danced, they did it all. Jacob Rice was third place in computer science for seventh grade. Amio Destin was first place for science in eighth grade. Sophia Pinuco placed third in Spanish for sixth grade. Samley Roblero Perez was first place in Spanish for seventh grade. Isabel Ramirez Velasquez was second place for Spanish in eighth grade. One of the cool things Beta does is they watch your performances throughout the competition and then they hand out these golden tickets at the end. It's kind of like American Idol where you get a golden ticket and you get to go perform on the stage at, like, nationals automatically. So we had two premier performers singers. We had Emmy and Aria. And then we had Leela for our premier performer dancer. And then, just when you thought it could not get any better than this, Talia Grimes was able to induct Brooke Johnson as our next Virginia State Beta. We just wanted to take a moment as a group to thank the board for such awesome support that they have of Beta, such helpfulness. When we're like, we have to take three buses and there's a lot of stuff, they're like, we can work on it. We'll get a box truck. And we're like, thank you for the box truck, because it saves us so much money. So we just want to say thank you.
Thank you!
And they have a little special treat for you as a small token of our helpfulness.
I neglected to say Mr. Thompson was my supervisor this year, so I'm trying to make it full back. I have never worked alongside the Nandua High School principal, but I do remember when she was All-American Basketball Leader of the School, so we go back a ways, too. She's going to introduce two groups, her Beta and her swim team, Ms. Giddens.
Good evening, everyone. Our Beta Club sponsor, Ms. Chelsea Bertigum, was not able to be here, so I'm going to introduce our kids. I believe I've seen two of them. So this year, we had eleven people that qualify for the national tournament. We are going to have seven that actually attend, and I have with me today two of our first-place finishers. We have Sophia Morell, who was first place in black and white photography, and Reagan Payne, Reagan Payne, who was first in the onsite cake decorating. So we have several fundraisers, I'm sorry, I'm going to do a plug, but we have several fundraisers that we have, they have organized the students and the sponsor and parents for us to, you know, knock down some of the funds to be able to get to Orlando in June. So, those have already been sent out to you all, so those are upcoming, but congratulations to these two ladies right here. I also have our swim team members. Now, our swim team is made up mainly of Nandua High School athletes, but it's open to everyone in the county, so we need Shigetake, we need Arcadia, we need everyone to come. We had our horse team, Lucas is here, oh, we have Carter Harmon here to talk about that.
Well, hi, my name's Carter Harmon. I am the boys' team coach. Unfortunately, our other coach, KJ, wasn't able to make it here tonight, but yeah, we had another really successful season, both teams did. The boys were able to win the Region 2A Championship again, and the girls were runners-up. And we had five swimmers make the All-State Team this year. We had Sarah Bentley here, and the rest of our team was not able to be here tonight because of their participation in spring sports. But I'm going to just say something about the four boys that were on the All-State Team for being third place in the 200 freestyle relay and fourth place in the 200 medley relay. It was Zach Smith, Camden Lewis, Lucas Calvetti, and Austin Werke. And Sarah Bentley was also on the All-State Team for being second in the 100 breaths and third in 200 IM. And up here, we also have Lucas Elliott. He also went to us, to States. And, oh, and one other thing, both teams, I believe, had their highest scoring at States this year. Both teams were fourth out of twenty-eight teams at the state level this year, so we're optimistic for things to come.
Before we move on, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't miss any teams. I think I got everybody. If anybody we overlooked.
Excuse me, is my cheer team here? Cheer is here.
I didn't know that your team was here.
So we have Ms. Joy Phillips, who's going to talk about our run at States this year.
Hey, thanks for having me back. I was privileged enough to coach the Nandua High School cheer team. I'm so glad Michaela made it out to celebrate tonight with us. Give her a round of applause. We had twelve athletes take the bat, and the one thing we always say about cheerleading is, it doesn't matter who your weakest link is, they're on the floor with you the whole time. There's no bench sheets in cheerleading. So we worked together as a team, and I think we had some days where we had all the love in the world, and I think we had some days where stunts wouldn't hit and we had all the prayer in the world. So we made it together with both of those components, and I think one of the coolest things at first was at regionals when they announced we were in second place, because we knew we had a safe bid, and we were cheering, and we were cheering, and we were cheering. And it didn't matter if they called us second or first, because we were headed to States. And then at States, we kept saying, you know, we've never been here. If we can make it through first round, that would be phenomenal. And then the scores came out, and we went to the second round, and we were like, we did even better than we ever could have predicted. And it was really an awesome experience to be at the VHSL States with cheer. It was awesome to see all, you know, the peppy cheerleaders cheering for each other and all the good stuff. There's a lot of pictures online, if you go to VHSL, that you can see them in stunts and in dances, and it just really showcases how talented our group of Nandua High School warriors are. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for coming. It's nice to see you all on a nice, happy face. Sometimes we all always get that in schoolwork. So, next up on our agenda is a group of second readings. Does anyone have any questions about any of those?
I don't know if anyone can speak to this, but I have a question. I don't know.
would be in which, other than like an actual emergency in some sort, in which the superintendent would need to make a snap decision, policies.
Who exactly, which policy does this?
Eight-two, it's situations where action must be taken by a school division if the school board has not adopted a policy nor provided guidelines for administrative action, the superintendent has the power to act. But the superintendent's decisions are subject to review by the school board at its next regular meeting. It is the duty of the superintendent to inform the school board promptly if such an action is taken and if a need for a policy.
Basically, what that means, if it's the first time something has occurred, something nobody foresaw hasn't happened anywhere we know about, and it happened, I don't know that I've ever been through that, but somewhere there's a first rate thing, then the superintendent, because there is a lack of policy, would proceed to deal with whatever situation it is, and then would be required to immediately basically notify the board on what action is taken and why. And then the board can review it, and if they did not agree with the superintendent, overrule whatever their opinion was or their ruling was. So it would be something that's not been thought of yet, never had that arise, and there's a superintendent, but it's possible.
So I guess if the action taken was not approved by the board, so to speak, they would reverse it.
Exactly, exactly. If you all felt that the superintendent's action was excessive, that you could change it, you would also, though, basically have to institute your own policy to deal with that as it came up the next time, no matter what. Even if you agreed with what the superintendent did, you would adopt a formal policy, regulations, implement that policy for that time going forward, so.
And for record, this is a new policy. It's just how wording has changed. Did you want to put that on the side for a third reading at the next meeting, or just let it ride?
I think it's probably okay, but I would like to kind of tweak it a little bit, just that, because we have, we have two meetings a month, and so we, it could be subject to review at just the next meeting. I would have to say the next regular meeting. And it would be nice if we could be a little, just a little more specific on how we will be informed, you know, like to say, we're going to get an email, or we're going to get a text or whatnot.
Probably could be interpreted differently. So, we'll set that one, we'll set that aside. So, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
I only speak to potentially be helpful. I hear the questions, some of those details are typically out of procedure. I took just a moment, because I think as a question, I'll look at the code, and it's equally vague, probably intentionally. I don't know if that helps. It's not anything I feel strongly about. I just look back at the code because this policy is actually more specific than the actual code. Again, I don't know if that helps.
No one has any questions about the others? We can proceed with voting on these with the exception of eight-point-oh-two.
I'm Jared. I'm going to approve the second reading policies, eight-point-oh-one, eight-point-oh-three through eight-point-eleven. I can give point-oh-two for a third read.
There's a motion, a second to approve all the policies except for eight-point-oh-two, which we will have a third reading on next meeting. All the paymen?
Aye.
Proposed? Motion carries. And there's a group of first reading policies. If you have any questions or any clarification, please contact the appropriate staff. Next up, Aerospace Academy Lab School. Hello?
Hello!
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Is there a clicker?
She does it.
She does it. You're going to do it? Okay. I can click. Would that be okay? All right, thank you. I did put a packet at each of your seats, so you have some information there and a sticker. I am Rachel Wyne. I'm the director of the Aerospace Academy of the Eastern Shore, and thank you so much for allowing time this evening for me to give you an update on the program. We've been hard at work at making progress on this. So just to give you a quick agenda, I'm going to give you an overview of what's a lab school, what is the Center for Educational Innovation Opportunities at ODU, and an update on our program of study and the marketing and recruitment efforts that we've made. So when we look at what is a lab school, lab schools are the convergence of education and industry, and it's a unique partnership between higher education, K through 12, and industry. And it is to foster experimentation with pedagogical approaches and practices. The ODU Center for Educational Innovation Opportunity is the hub for ODU's lab school network, and the center fosters a culture for innovation in K through 12 in higher education and develops scale- and develops scaleable strategies for educational programs statewide. The ODU Lab School Network, as you can see, is a broad network and it provides a system for collaboration across the state. So in June of 2024, the Governor Glenn Youngkin celebrated the approval of the Aerospace Focus Lab School on the Eastern Shore. And he says, I quote, "Together we are expanding innovative educational opportunities for students and parents, empowering them to reach the stars." I have a quick video for you. It is less than a minute. It's a promotional video that is actually showcases students here across the shore. I hope they're sound. In the heart of the Eastern Shore, a new generation of aerospace leaders is taking flight. The Aerospace Academy of the Eastern Shore offers more than just education. It's a pathway to the future. Students gain hands-on experience in engineering and data science, building the skills that will shape the next generation of aerospace professionals. This tuition-free program is open to rising ninth graders across Virginia and provides a four-year curriculum. With 50 spots available annually, students are selected through lottery system, ensuring fair access. Apply today and take the first step toward building the future of flight with the Aerospace Academy of the Eastern Shore. So that video was actually taken at our kickoff event, which was in November at the Eastern Shore Community College. And so, as I said, those are the faces of your students. So I have been in secondary education for the last 15 years. I was a high school teacher for 10 and a school administrator for five. I worked in higher education as a visiting instructor and then the Assistant Director of Virginia Space Grant Consortium prior to taking on this role. So this academy was established in 2024. It serves grades nine through 12 and it is a state-funded grant for five years totaling $4.67 million. So looking at this, we are in year zero. This is our startup year where we are in development, marketing, and recruitment. And what we are right now is recruiting the first 50 students that will serve year one. When we move into year two, we'll add 50 more students and the ninth grade will move into 10th. When we look at year four of the grant period, we will have grades nine through 12. Our ninth grade year will be a co-located program at each of the students' zone schools. So two of their courses for the program are considered elective courses. So keep in mind that they will also be taking their required courses for their diploma. The two courses are computer science and engineering explorations and that these courses are geared towards project and problem-based with industry identifying those problems. Also, other activities are six experiential learning days where we're bringing the 50 students together where they can do mission design work, work with subject matter experts. All four years will have an exhibition of learning at the Eastern Shore Community College and students will be creating a digital portfolio. At the end of their ninth grade year, they have the opportunity to partake in the Virginia Space Flight Academy Camp. 10th grade looks a lot like ninth grade where they're co-located and those two courses are cybersecurity and engineering analysis and application, which is a completer course from that freshman engineering. We'll also have the six experiential learning days, the exhibition of learning, and further development of the portfolio. This summer too, we'll have ODU residential summer experience. 11th and 12th grade is a little bit different. We're looking at having the 50 students be centrally located, potentially at the Eastern Shore Community College for part of the day every day. At that point, we believe that students will have a divergence in what they want to study. So some of them might want to do more pre-college work and others might want to do a trade base, like aerospace technology, for example, aviation maintenance. The third summer will be an internship where they do work-based experiences. So who will teach these courses? The grant is funded STEM specialist. These will be licensed Virginia teachers and in year one, they will teach the ninth grade course and in year two, the ninth and 10th grade courses. They will lead the instruction across the four high schools and rotate through the four locations. There is a potential that this will be shared with NASA Wallop Spike Facility where they'll be badge and have a location there as well. When they're not at one of the four locations, we'll have trade assistants to oversee the So where do these students go? The year, the year zero funding is going towards classroom renovation and equipment. So you can see here at Nandua, Nandua and Arcadia High School that we're funding a wall being put into the libraries and that these are maker's space field classrooms. Shekateek is part of the STEM classroom that back storage space is being renovated. The year zero money is also funding laptops, software packages, wind tunnels, 3D printers, and a flight simulator. So our marketing and recruitment efforts include that kickoff event from the video, two virtual information nights. I attended one of the Title I nights tables there. And then I've also visited three of your middle schools and talked to the eighth grade students. So currently right now, this is actually one less. So we have 69 applications in our lottery system. The legislation says it has to be through a third party. So 57 of those are Akamak County students. Fifty-five letters have been sent and so they have until the end of this month to either confirm or decline. So at this point, we're on a wait list. So we are learning as we go. Since this is a lab school, it's probably adaptable like we want our students to be. And so the design thinking framework is what we are using to thread across the four high schools across the two divisions. And so there are people in this audience that attended this workshop on March 12th. It was led by Dr. John Abaki from ODU. We had 19 educators from Akamak and there were 25 participants from industry as well. And they went through the design thinking workshop. So we invite you to visit our website. It provides updates and more information. And we do have an upcoming event this Saturday and we invite all of you to attend from 1 to 3 at the NASA Wallops Visitor Center. At this time, I will take any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions? It's really a great, great opportunity for Akamak County. Thank you.
Thank you. I really enjoyed working with everyone from Akamak. It's been great.
Any other questions?
I'm so glad you came to tell us about this. I'm glad there's been a lot of interest and plenty of applications. That's wonderful.
Yes, thank you. We're hoping to get more.
It's a great opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Come back and see us again.
Of course. And you're often on the shore.
Okay.
Wonderful. There's something waiting for the funding.
Do you have my report? Do you have any questions?
Do we need to keep the carryover money as long as we can extend it?
The carryover?
Yeah.
They, years ago, they had a policy that we could carry over 1.25%. They waived that policy when COVID hit. There's also a reason to waive it because of the renovation of Akamak Primary School, which they wanted us to accomplish. I have not, we have some supervisor members here, but I have not heard anything about them reinstituting the 1.25% limit.
I meant the, the carry forward money on this, on this, on the title, on the title program. 50% carry forward money?
Oh, we, okay, that, okay. So if you take Title I?
Yes.
By September, I'm sorry. By September 30th of 26, we have to have that 1.1 down to 278. So we are doing, right. So we, both of those, only Title I and Title V have the carryover provision where it's limited to 15%. Instruction Department is meeting monthly with Carl West in finance and he is doing salary projections through the year. It's with the instruction department. It's with Karen Taylor, who was here, Katie Farrell. Oh, sorry. It's not here. And they go over their plans and when, you know, because you can order something, but it might not come for someone and they go over those cash projections on a monthly basis. I believe there's one tomorrow morning.
And Title I is active zero and half before the 20th of January.
Okay.
You see there, it's all good.
So we are, we have reinstituted those monthly meetings and Carl West was closely with it for the past year and a half and is familiar with it and able to do the projections and to make sure that it's timely spent.
Anybody else have any questions?
So I included the updated revenues that were based on the general assembly proposal, which you see if you move down, it's additional revenues of $1.3 million, which if you go down a little bit further, it means with the current budget that we have advertised, we have now gone from $1.5 million short to $192,000 short. So as soon as the governor signs it or vetoes or whatever and we have final numbers, then we'll be coming back for you all to add, subtract, you know, whatever you want. So we have a balanced budget. But the general assembly revenue is favorable to, to our budget for next year. And, you know, that is the budget that we went to public hearing, presented, presented to the board supervisors. It still stands as it is. And once we get the final revenues, then we will be coming back to this board with proposals and suggestions. I did also want to point out that in that same general assembly budget, that for the current year that we are in now, the general assembly has proposed, they're giving us a state payment to go towards a thousand dollar bonus plus social security taxes. So they figured out how much they were giving us based on our SOQ funded positions. So we have, they did it based on our FY '25 SOQ funded position, which is 478.06. And they calculated FICA on that and that comes to the allocation that they are willing to give us this year if we sign that we are meeting the requirements of $514,632. They encourage us to maximize the use of state funds to promote retention among instructional and support positions. And the caveat is that if we agree to receive this money and pay it out, we must do it prior to June 1st of 2025. So this is something that we need to be discussing and act on in April because it is quite an undertaking for the payroll department to get, to get that out. So we will be coming back and discussing this at our April meetings. But they are willing to give us $514,000 in this current year.
We don't know whether that will be formalized.
No, I, I looked and I did not see it.
Anybody have any questions?
Who was that number given based on?
514,000?
No, the 448.
For the fiscal year 2025, we have 478.06 SOQ funded positions. And as I was talking to Mrs. Turner over here today, you know, they, they break that down. You know, it is not just a ballpark number. There probably are 40 categories that that includes.
Any other questions from the center?
Thank you.
So next up is our action layer is a sign-on bonus proposal. This is to help Mr. Johnson recruit teachers when he's at the job fairs. And I believe it would be a thousand dollars to new to the division licensed teachers and 1,500 for new to the division licensed special ed teachers.
Correct. Also keep in mind though, that this current fiscal year, we did a thousand dollars to all just new employees. So you'd have to, you know, let me know which way you want to go with that. Either all new full-time employees to the division or you just want to specify all new teachers to the division, a thousand dollars. And then we, we need some help recruiting with the special education teachers that really in a shortage. So that's why we're proposing a 1,500 dollar sign-on bonus for special education teachers. When you go to these job fairs, you see, I mean, I know you're thinking, hey, why are we doing a difference here? When you go to these job fairs, you see it, you'll see, you know, a thousand or 2,000 for a sign-on bonus for teachers from different school divisions, but you may see a higher number for special education teachers just in demand. So, yeah. And just to piggyback on what Ms. Olin was saying, the state money would be a great opportunity for us to give some sort of retention bonus for our employees. And I think that, you know, that could be something that you can think about. I know again, last year we gave the $2,000 retention bonus to all our full-time employees. And I think this will be a good, this money will be a good opportunity for us to give, maybe not that much, but maybe, I don't know, y'all have talked about it, a thousand or $2,000 retention bonus for our employees this school year.
How many teachers did you hire last year about 14?
I would say when I got here, we had, I'm pretty sure about 30 open. And so I'm sure they hired a few before I was hired. So I would say in ballpark of 50 to 60.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So this could cost us 50 or 60,000 dollars. But I think it would help make us competitive since the other divisions are offering something similar at these job fairs.
I just want to put this out there. I'm fine with this. I think the last time we did 100 bonuses, there was a form letter like a...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I've already got it made up. Just waiting for y'all to approve them. So we've got form letters for a thousand for, for new teachers and 1,500 for special. It's already made up. It's already, I think I've even let Mr. Lawrence look over. And we can do the same if the retention bonus is approved. And there's specific language in there that says if you don't fulfill your year of work, then we're going to claw back a proper portion of that, of that bonus. Yep.
Any other questions?
I'm Jared. I'm going to approve this bonus for the new division licensed teachers to receive a thousand dollars and new to the division licensed special ed teachers to receive 1,500 dollars.
There's a motion to second to give bonuses to new to the division licensed teachers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
School board member comments? Who's your sponsor?
Hi, Mr. Lawrence.
Hi, Mr. Johnson. Just to thank Mr. Lawrence for arranging for all the wonderful students and teachers and coaches and everyone to come out. And it was, it was really nice to, to see all their smiling faces and celebrate their achievements. Thank you.
So I agree with Ms. Bowman. To have all the students come out, it's always a pleasure to find out what our students are doing and the accomplishments that they have made. I also wanted to take an opportunity to welcome and say thank you to our board supervisors, Ms. Johnson and Pastor Washington and also Ms. Taylor, Ms. Riley Taylor. She was newly appointed to the Akamak North Hampton Plan and District Commission. Thank you for being here. And also to the president of the Akamak NDOACP, Bishop Sabatino, and to the State Education Coordinator, Dr. James Feigman. Thank you for being here. And Pastor Clint A. Aye.
I just want to thank Mr. Lawrence for pitching in and being our acting superintendent. I appreciate that.
Sure. I'm glad you got it.
Yeah, we'll thank Mr. Lawrence. We'll thank Lawrence for coming in and seeing what he delivered to the community, and Ms. Bowman said about to make some presentation with the baby kids. And one thing, we have a request if we could give an update on the Akimac primary school, where we're doing the school board office, and we can update kind of where we're at in the seventh. I'll try to have it forwarded next to the office. Thank you.
Hi, just nice to see all the accomplishments of our students here in the division, and thank them for doing what they do to represent us, and thank the young men and women that teach them and guide them along the way.
Okay.
Mr. Lawrence, did you want to say anything?
Well, I want to offer one thing I'd like to say, and I want to thank the board for the retention bonus for our teachers, but I would also like the board to consider extending that bonus to all of our employees. You know, I'm really proud of all, we've been proud of what our support staff does for us. And I've got Mr. Reader sitting over here. Our kids don't get the stool if he doesn't have bus mechanics or drivers. Our kids don't get lunch if we don't have food service workers. Our buildings aren't maintained without Mr. Bennett and his staff. So if I could, I would like to ask you all at the earliest opportunity to extend that bonus, that retention bonus, to all of our full-time workers that we paid to, that you all paid to last hour here, but to all those categories, because we don't work without them. We just can't get our job done without them. I'd ask you to say that.
Everybody's important. You're great. And damn, Miss Snuck.
Welcome.
Read, Mr. Taylor should have read your roles again.
One, identify yourself by name and I will want address. Two, speakers are limited to three minutes. Three, individuals may reserve or transfer their time to another speaker. Four, specific personnel members must not be initiated at another meeting. Five, speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or misuse of property. Six, specify the nature of your remarks. Seven, speakers who have previously spoken on a subject for public comment should not be allowed to readdress the board during the same open comment period. Eight, specific questions do not, excuse me, specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or the appropriate staff member. Nine, anyone who would like to present a PowerPoint presentation for public comment has to be present, excuse me, has to present their presentation 24 hours in advance, coordinated by the staff for appropriateness. And 10, all questions shall be directed to the chairperson, and her discretion solicits a response from the appropriate staff member.
Good evening. My name is Ed Onok. I live at 27376 Whitesnap Road, Parsley, Virginia. I say I've been here several times, and I'm saying the same thing. We can do better, and we should do better. I'm not behind the closed-door sessions, but we seem to have a problem with retention of a superintendent. The last interim, sat here in the last meeting, and I watched how he must have felt. I've noticed in this. Couldn't decide on a budget. Some things were brought up that we shouldn't even have tried to do, and you worked against him. Every, they worked on a budget, you couldn't decide on anything. It was just, we'll take it the next time, or you would ask a question. And I believe the man was trying to do his best. But I believe sometimes we get stagnant in our positions, and we think that our position awards us the ability to disapprove anything that we don't suggest. As a parent, bred and born here on the Eastern Shore of Virginia, things should be changing by now. When we came to the last meeting, I do believe, we talked about, I asked a question about the, how is the next superintendent elected? I believe the last time that we come here, things have already been decided, and we don't know anything about it. And some things I don't want to know, but sometimes like too many things are done behind closed doors. And I wondered if the county, and I'm going to pursue this, has thought about having two parent members of this board, no voting member, but to be watchdogs of this board, because some things are going on that I think need our attention that we don't know about. Work together. Think consciously. Some of us are too old to do some things, and some of our thoughts are too old. But we have to think, you saw, we say we're thinking about the children, all these young people here who have done well. I wouldn't even want them to be in here, I'm glad they're gone, and we have this discussion because sometimes I think the children would be a little bit confused at some of the things we talk about. But work together. This gentleman here is our interim. Probably have already decided who's going to be the next superintendent. We don't know anything about that. But work together, be responsible. Don't bring up things, don't try to suggest things that are going to break the budget. But when someone works on the budget as hard as these people have, give them the courtesy of looking at it closely and not just deciding you don't want to do it. You were indecisive at the last minute, couldn't decide on anything. The man sat here and then you backed him forward, she couldn't decide. We'll talk about it later. We'll do this later. I'm just tired, I myself am tired of that. And I'm going to continue to say, we should be able to do better by now. We're grownups here. You've been in these positions for a while. You should know how the parents and I feel about this, and you should work and act accordingly.
Good evening. James Fetterman, 32255 Keller Pond Road, Painter, Virginia. Good evening, members and community. I'm here as the State NAACP Education Chair. I am super nervous for the students and staff of Akimac County as we navigate the dismantling of the U.S. Department of Education. What I want to know is where are all the leaders and elected officials who came to sound the alarm about the inadequacies of people and processes a few months ago? My information comes from the Federal Department of Education. Eliminating federal funding by dismantling the U.S. Department of Education is an attack on public education, and our community will pay the price. Virginia receives $1.5 billion in federal K through 12 support, which is the equivalent of more than 7,000 educators across the Commonwealth of Virginia. Losing that funding could mean losing those educator positions, which means larger class sizes, fewer resources, and less support for students, especially those students with disability and living in less-resourced communities and more than 200 million lost meals from high-need students. And this is specific to Akimac County. Akimac stands to lose $1,666 per student in federal funding, ranking 42nd for the most harmed out of the 132 school divisions in Virginia. What's at stake for Akimac? Akimac County could lose $7,462,75 in federal funds. That translates to 41 educators in Akimac County that could lose their jobs, disappearing, hurting classrooms, and the learning success of our students. In addition, Akimac County stands to lose funding in the equivalent of $885,934, fewer lunches for students that rely on them. And also, $2.1 million will be cut in Title Fund, Title I funds that would remove essential support for economically disadvantaged students, widening the achievement gaps. This translates to an additional 21 fewer education positions available in Akimac County that will be lost. So that is a total of 70 educators that will be lost in Akimac County. Let's make the math simple and let's make it plain. That means one entire school, if we're just looking at people, would be without all of their employees if you were to look at them individually. And also, we would lose $1.2 million for IDA funding. Those are our students with the most vulnerable needs, special education, compromising their rights to a quality inadequate education. So I just caution us, as we're talking about all of the funding, where are we going to get the funds from when the federal government cuts it? As your Education Chair, I can promise you that my numbers are accurate and the cuts are coming.
I would appreciate if you would email me that. I haven't seen any or read anything.
And that's because it's been in the federal, yes, I can lie with it. I would love to do that. I would love to do that. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now adjourn to closed meetings.